Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good evening. I'm sorry, we're still shuffling around proclamations up here. Good evening and welcome to the June 4th council meeting. Typically, it is a proclamation-only meeting, but this month, we always have a business meeting because we have some statutorily required disclosures to make in the form of a public hearing for the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. But, we will begin, as we begin all of our proceedings, and that is by asking God's grace on the deliberations that we make here. So, I would like to invite Pastor Ben Gisselbach from Edgewood Church of Christ to the podium up here, sir, and ask him to pray for us. You bow your heads with me. Our dear, wise, loving, righteous Father in heaven, on behalf of everyone assembled today, we thank you for allowing this important meeting. We thank you for our health, our blessings, our friendships, our nation, and our great city in which we are permitted by your grace to live and to manage the affairs of. We thank you for entrusting us with the responsibility here in this room of leading and legislating on behalf of the citizens of this city. We thank you for the freedoms that we have, not just the freedoms afforded by this city or this state and this country, but most importantly, we thank you for the freedom that we have to embrace you or reject you. We thank you for loving us. We thank you for demonstrating your love for us and help us to carry on that example and model that sacrificial love for those around us. In your book, in Romans 13, you've told us that citizens ought to obey their governing authorities since all governing authorities serve at your pleasure. We pray that everyone in this room will have an attitude of respectfulness and submission to all civil authorities in this room. You've placed in office the governing authorities to promote peace, justice, and well-being. I pray today for our mayor, for our city council members, for all other levels of city officials in this room. Please give them wisdom as they navigate through conflicting interests. Give them a desire for what is just. Give them a heart for what is right. Give them an ability to work in harmony in times of disagreements. Give them peace in their own lives and in their own homes as they return back this evening. We pray that all that is said and done in this room will be done with an awareness of your watchful eye. We thank you for communicating your truth to us, and we pray that everything we do that is accomplished today will be always in accordance with your truth. In your blessed and holy name, we pray, amen. Thank you Pastor for that. We are very grateful, and please thank your parishioners for sharing you with us. And I think it's probably appropriate, following that prayer for grace for us, in that we also offer up a prayer for remembrance of those individuals in Virginia Beach, Virginia, public servants who went to work to do the work of serving the citizens of their community not knowing that 12 of them would not survive the day, actually 13, including the shooter. So, our thoughts and our prayers, as a community and as a city government, are with the victims, with their families, and with the family of the shooter. It was a tragedy all the way around, and like most municipalities around the country, we have held our flags at half-staff through this afternoon in remembrance of those public servants. So, we ask you that you keep them in your prayers and your thoughts. Next, we'll move on to the pledge. We are fortunate to have with us the Golden Elite dancers. If you want to come up front, and if you would, please rise to your feet so we can say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his beautiful, living, and justice for all.
Very good. If you would, don't leave, don't leave. We'd like you to just tell us your name and how old you are, and then when you finish, we'd love for your sponsor here to tell us a little bit about the Golden Elite dancers.
My name's Felicity, and I'm 14.
My name is Trania, and I am 15.
My name is Alexis, and I'm 15.
My name is Janai, and I'm 12.
My name is Justice, and I'm 5.
My name is Grayson, I'm seven and a half years old.
Seven and a half, and you don't have to tell us your age, but if you would, just tell us a little bit about the dancers.
All right, I own a foundation, it's called the Kings and Queens Foundation, and under that foundation, I have formed a dance team, the Golden Elites. And what we do, they perform at different churches. We came from East Columbus Magnet Academy. All of them, except for her, and the little ones of course, danced for me when I was the dance coach at East Columbus. And so, we transitioned and formed our own dance team because they wanted to continue to dance with me. But, what the Kings and Queens Foundation do, we give homage to the unsung heroes here in Columbus, Georgia. So, the people that are working behind the scenes and doing great things, we kind of bring them to the front. We have a podcast that we do with D30 Radio, and they get to come on and tell us who they are and what they do. My name is Brandy Angel Adams, most people just call me Angel, and it's a joy to be here today. I have some cards with my information on it that I would love to give to you guys, and so you guys will remember us.
Absolutely.
And these three are mine. This is my oldest, this is my middle, and this is my baby.
Well, we're very grateful that you guys joined us tonight, and y'all did such a good job on the pledge. Y'all give one more round of applause.
Thank you.
All right, next up is approval of the minutes for May 28th meeting. Yes. We don't have a quorum, we don't, do we? All right, we'll come back to the minutes, we'll move on to the proclamations. The first proclamation that we've got scheduled for this evening is, goes to Neighbor Works Columbus, and it will be read by Counselor House. Counselor House, if you'd...
Thank you, Mayor. With the Neighbor Works representatives, please come forward. Certainly is a great pleasure and honor for me to have a chance to read this because I know all the great work that Neighbor Works does. Whereas National Neighbor Works Week was initiated in 1984 by a United States Congressional Resolution, co-sponsored by more than 260 members of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan, and whereas the formal introduction of National Neighbor Works Week occurred in the spring of 1986, and began an annual national celebration held through the first, held the first through the second, Saturday in June. And whereas National Neighbor Works Week is a celebration of neighborhood pride and unity among organizations in more than 2,500 urban, suburban, and rural communities across the country. And whereas National Neighbor Works Week celebrates the efforts of local organizations working with partners and volunteers to create healthier communities. And whereas Neighbor Works Columbus, a Neighbor Works America organization, has worked in Columbus for 20 years and has assisted nearly 3,500 families in securing safe, fit, and affordable housing. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim the week of June 1st to the 8th, 2019, as Neighbor Works Columbus Week.
Thank you.
You have a chance to say something.
Yes, I'm Melanie Faison, I'm the Director of Production and Program Services at Neighbor Works Columbus. I've been there 16 years, and we are celebrating our 20-year anniversary this year, so mark your calendars, in August, we're having a big shing ding, and you guys are all welcome. And with me, I have Mitch Watkins, he's a member of our Board of Directors, and I'll let him introduce himself.
As Melanie said, I'm Vice Chair of the Board of Neighbor Works Columbus, and very thankful and proud to be here and receive this proclamation on behalf of a lot of folks who do a lot of hard work. As the councilman said, Neighbor Works Columbus is celebrating its 20th year in existence, providing safe and affordable housing to the residents of this community. Also, I want to take time to thank the city for our partnership. Without you guys, we couldn't do what we do. So, thank you for our partnership, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Well, y'all do an amazing job, thank you so much. Come on around, Mitch, if you would, walk around.
Come here, shake your hand.
You can shake everybody's hand and get your proclamation.
Yeah.
Next up is a proclamation, Counselor Thomas is going to read it, it's for the Miss Georgia Scholarship Competition Week. Is anybody here for Miss Georgia? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm privileged to read this proclamation into the record, recognizing the Miss Georgia Scholarship Competition Week. Whereas this year marks the 75th anniversary of the Miss Georgia Competition. And whereas Columbus has been the home and competition site of the Miss Georgia, of Miss Georgia since 1945, the 2019 competition marks the 75th anniversary. And whereas on December 21st, 2018, the Miss America Organization awarded the state license to Trina Pruitt of La Grange, Georgia, and there was an organizational name change from Miss Georgia to Miss Georgia Scholarship Competition. And whereas each year, hundreds of visitors attend Miss Georgia, pumping thousands of dollars into Columbus economy through restaurants, lodging, and shopping. And whereas on June 12th through the 15th, 2019, in the Bill Hurd Theater at the River Center for the Performing Arts, approximately 29 young women will compete for the title of Miss Georgia 2019. And 31 teams will vie for the title of Georgia's Outstanding Teen 2019. And whereas Miss Georgia is a scholarship pageant, and Miss Georgia 2019 will receive a $15,000 scholarship and the opportunity to compete in the Miss America Pageant, the largest scholarship program for women in the United States. And whereas the Miss Georgia program transforms young ladies and prepares them to be successful in life and in their career path. Title holders have become physicians, dentists, attorneys, teachers, business leaders, journalists, entertainers, homemakers, and probably every other profession you can think of. Whereas Miss Georgia has had two become Miss America, Niva Jane Langley, Miss America 1953, and Betty Cantrell, Miss America 2016. And whereas the city of Columbus welcomes friends, family, and contestants of this year's Miss Georgia and Miss Georgia's Outstanding Teen Pageants, and extends best wishes for a memorable visit. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, does hereby proclaim Wednesday, June 12th through Saturday, June 15th, 2019, as Miss Georgia Scholarship Competition Week. Congratulations.
One of yours, Miss Daniels.
Hey, I'm George Daniels, and this is my husband Billy. We have been volunteers for the, I was getting ready to say the American Cancer Society, but that's another thing.
I understand that too.
With Miss Georgia for 35 years, and our main job at this point, and has been for years, is working with the forever Miss Georgias that come back every year. And this year, we're going to have a luncheon for them, which is going to be at the Pastoral Institute, and Kim is going to help us with getting that done.
Well, I'm Kim Rizicky, and I have attended every Miss Georgia Pageant since I was nine years old, which was way back in the 1970s. And I'm very pleased that Columbus is maintaining possession of the pageant following this change this year. It's a big thing for Columbus to bring all of these people from across the state, the contestants, their families, and their friends, and the other local franchises to our city, and it's a really big thing. And I'm so proud of our mayor and our leadership who stepped forward and really fought for it to stay in Columbus at the River Center. It just wouldn't be right to not be at the River Center, and so, thank you from all of us. I am not in any official capacity other than a committee member at this time, however, I am a past contestant, past parent of a contestant, and past State Board Member. But I am looking forward to attending once again, and I appreciate all that the city did to maintain the pageant in Columbus, so.
Hard to imagine this competition being held anywhere else.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
I'm Margie Norman, and I've been involved with the Miss Georgia Pageant for the past three years, a prior board member, and I'll be involved with the production team this year, too.
Thank all of you for what you do. If you could come around, let us shake your hand and tell you thank you. Oh, Billy, I'm sorry.
Debbie.
I'm Billy Daniels, and I enjoy working with the pageant, to see the same ladies come through as they grow older and you have children and grandchildren. We get the, we have the pleasure of meeting all of them, and it is really, really a good thing to have in Columbus. Without it being in Columbus, we don't know where we will go from here. This is the best place to have it, and we have, we raised a lot of money by having it here, and we just, we just enjoy the company when they come into town and know exactly who they're going to eat already because they've been here before. We just love the pageant.
Debbie Seeley, past board member, past committee member, past volunteer, love the Miss Georgia family, if you will, and glad to see that it is back here in, in here in Columbus, Georgia, and the fact that so many of your people are coming to our fabulous community, so thank you.
Thank y'all. Now, you can come around here. I was too quick before, I'm sorry. the Cow Day. Is Beth Reed Richardson here, or something Best Buy? Y'all come on up, please.
I think everybody's been wondering what's going to happen to Katie the Cow. So, I think, Mr. Mayor, tonight, we're going to find out.
We are excited.
Are you excited?
We are excited.
You're not the only ones, sir. Everybody's wondering what's going to happen to Katie the Cow. Well, I feel like I'm at the Academy Awards right now, so I'm going to open, I'll read this proclamation, and it reads thusly, it says, "Whereas Katie the Cow, the black-and-white cow who stands 20 feet tall, has stood in her current location since 1967, and whereas Katie the Cow was originally built and placed along Manchester Expressway to mark the home of Canet Dairies. And whereas Katie the Cow remained in her spot after the dairy re-located in 2003, and Best Buy opened its Columbus store at that location. And whereas Katie the Cow has become a beloved landmark of the city of Columbus, and residents care very deeply about her well-being and the history she represents. And whereas the Best Buy has been a part of the Columbus community since 2003, and shares the residents' wishes that Katie the Cow remain a permitted part of the city of Columbus. And whereas Best Buy has granted an easement for the land upon which Katie the Cow stands to ensure that she will remain in her current location under the care of the city of Columbus, Georgia, and accessible to the public. And whereas the city of Columbus appreciates Best Buy's interest and assistance in preserving Katie the Cow for the residents of Columbus, Georgia. Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, BH Skip Henderson III, does hereby proclaim Sunday, June 9th, 2019, as Katie the Cow Day in the city of Columbus, Georgia."
We definitely want to thank you, Mayor Henderson, and the councilors, for working with Best Buy to secure the permanent home for Katie the Cow. For nearly 16 years, as you mentioned, Katie the Cow greeted Best Buy customers and employees at our store there on Manchester Expressway. And as a committed member of the Columbus community, we are honored to play a role in making sure she will remain visible and accessible to the public for years to come. We're excited to join the city and the residents of Columbus in celebrating Katie the Cow Day on June 9th.
Well, we are grateful. The other two, you want to introduce yourselves?
My name's Peter Gunn, go by PK. Been with Best Buy for about 15 years, and Katie the Cow, I grew up in Columbus, Georgia, and it's always been part of that landmark to be there, so.
Good afternoon, my name is Carol Brown, I'm actually the operations manager there. With PK, we actually both opened that location, so we remember everything that happened around Katie when we got ready to open, so it was awesome to be able to give her back to the city.
Well, we're grateful for your investment in Columbus, we're grateful for you allowing Katie to stand in her pasture forevermore. And I guess the only appropriate thing to say would be, the idea of Katie moving is utter nonsense. Y'all come around, let us shake your hands, thank you. Next up, Counselor Walker Garrett is going to present a proclamation in recognition of LGBT Pride Month. Good evening.
Good evening, how you doing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank y'all for inviting us this weekend, we appreciate being able to celebrate with you, and that was a great event y'all put on. It's my honor to read the proclamation to the record. "Whereas every June, our nation celebrates LGBT Pride Month in honor of the June 28th, 1969 Stonewall riots that served as a catalyst for the gay rights movement in the United States and around the world. And whereas, in the city of Columbus, Georgia, on Saturday, June 1st, 2019, commemorating the Stonewall Inn riots 50th anniversary, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBT community and allies come together for a month-long celebration of love, diversity, remembrance, acceptance, and unashamed self-pride for the sixth annual Columbus, Georgia LGBT Pride Festival on Broadway. And whereas Colgay Pride set out on a mission six years ago to provide our city with the first, its first Broadway citywide LGBT Pride Festival, the LGBT Pride Festival brings all citizens together, gay and straight alike, to celebrate the power of diversity, to create unity in our community, to hear each other's stories and impassioned pleas for better legislation and leadership. And whereas, for five years, this Columbus, Georgia LGBT Pride Festival has grown to more than 1,000 people attending each year, and continues to change lives and perspectives in our community. And whereas, in 2015, LGBT marriage equality became law, and four years later, we are reminded each day that the fight is far from over when it comes to equality and nondiscrimination. With an atmosphere filled with chaotic and dangerous multifaceted division, the theme of this year's pride is end division and unite. And whereas, each year, we honor individuals who have gone above and beyond the call of duty. We honor them for their service, fortitude, and work they do as LGBT citizens and allies. This year, we honor and recognize David Brazil, AKA Blaze Star, for lifetime achievement, entertainment, and mentoring. Harry Underwood, for LGBT Pioneer of the Year. Michelle Dwyer Johnson, for the design artwork of the 2019 Official Pride T-shirt. Raymond Chambles, for his, Chambles, for his tireless and selfless works protecting our citizens and neighbors while going above and beyond to end division and unite our community. Former Mayor Teresa Tomlinson, with a Lifetime Achievement Leadership Award. And whereas, the fight for dignity and equality for LGBT people is reflected in the tireless dedication of advocates and allies who strive to forge a more inclusive society. And whereas, this month, we recognize all they have done to bring us to this point, and we recommit to bending the arc of our country, state, and great sea toward a more equal and diverse nation. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, does hereby proclaim the month of June 2019 as Columbus, Georgia Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month."
I'm Jeremy Hobbs, Director of Colgay Pride. I want to thank Mayor Skip Henderson, Mayor, excuse me, Counselor Woodson, Counselor Garrett, thank you so much for being there this year and continuing forth the legacy. Counselor Woodson said she was Henderson's the first one, and we appreciate the love and growing unity within this community. We still have a lot of work to do to end division and unite, and I think it's where we start looking at, stop checking off boxes to separate ourselves, and start thinking of all of us as us. You know, we're all in this together, we're all in the fight together, we're all citizens of America, and we have to do everything we can each and every day to build a better united country. These are the United States of America, and it's time we start acting it. We have a lot of work still to do with the violence, and everything else that's going out there. Five transgender people have been killed this year alone, just the last two months. We've got so many things out there that we need to educate on and do much more, but we thank the city of Columbus for helping us bring forth the quality programming and events that we do. I thank all the people of Columbus that came out and supported this event, all of our wonderful sponsors and so forth. And also, a particular special thank you to all the adults who got up on Broadway and stood in front of the protesters as we did Drag Queen Storytime, to block out the kids from hearing all the protest. I think that really sent a big message to how many parents out there really do care about teaching their kids civility, love, diversity, and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. My name is Harry Underwood, I'm Communications Director for Colgay Pride, and I wish to thank Honorable Mayor Henderson, Councilman Garrett, Councilman Woodson, and also Councilman Barnes for their support for LGBT Pride Month. And also, I wish to say that since moving here is for over the last six years, over six years ago, that I have been floored by the opportunities I've been able to have in working with the LGBT community and with other communities in this city for civil rights, for justice, for economic equality as well. And this has gone into many other areas, especially for addressing issues within our criminal justice system in order to ensure equality and respect and dignity in the treatment of people who are in in order to ensure equality and respect and dignity in the treatment of people who are incarcerated. And I wish to thank also the people who have worked with Colgay Pride, with CV Pride, and with other LGBT organizations over these last six years. Thank you so much.
Hi, y'all. My name is Tessa Spiller. I'm a transgender, and I've been on Colgay Pride for six years. When I first became with Colgay Pride, it was hard for me to come out transgender. And ever since I've been with the organization, in the city, a lot of us have had pride each year. Every year, I grow, and I just want to say I thank y'all for letting us do this.
I didn't know it was going to be coming up here. Reverend Emily Bell, Pastor of Forgiving Heart United Church of Christ, and ex-officio member by being the pastor of the church. I want to say we've been part of the Pride celebrations that have gone on since 1999 and part now with Colgay Pride as well. And I've seen this city move forward in a lot of areas. And I'm just grateful for the work that the city does and the work that Jeremy and does and the work that CV Pride does, all coming together, we can move forward in the city. When I first moved here in 98, they told me that this Columbus was 50 years behind the times. And I thought, well, okay. But we're not that anymore. We're moving forward, and I'm glad to be a part of it.
Thank you. And I just want to say, Jeremy, that the four of you are just representatives of a larger group that worked so hard to continue to move us and focus on inclusion and move us closer to what we want to be, and that is one united community. So thank you for your efforts and congratulations on another great event. Y'all come around, shake your hands. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Barnes.
Jeremy, I want to, I've mentioned with Harry on a number of occasions, you've done a lot of work to educate this community on the many issues. And it took a lot of hard work, took stepping out. And you were in a very vulnerable position when you did that, but you had enough courage to step forward. Columbus has come a long way. We should not have discrimination in any form at all. And so I applaud you for that. Harry, by the way, you know, is my, the best webmaster. He does my website. And Emily, let me just tell you something. It was a huge treat for my wife and I on occasions that we came to your church. And extremely loving, besides the fact that you all know how to treat people and you throw down after the service. Now, all joking aside, it was a pleasure. And when I did look to see, my wife told me to tell you, to express appreciation for the times that we did come to your church, and we will be coming again.
Thank you, Councilor Barnes. Y'all come around, let us shake your hand. All right, and I think our final proclamation this evening, Councilor Thomas is going to present it for Deisha Irving Day. Does I say that right?
Yes. Deisha, would you come up? As Deisha's coming up, I want to tell you a little bit. The Muskogee Educational Excellence Foundation, each year, working with the Muskogee County School District, selects the Muskogee County School District Teacher of the Year. And in order to be considered for this position, you first of all have to be nominated by the teachers at your site. The principal doesn't get to pick. It's the teachers at the site who select the teacher from that site. And then all 57 of those folks fill out an application. It's a, Deisha, about a 10-page has been. And we have a committee that selects from that, from those 57, the top 10 nominees. And then those 10 are interviewed by a selection committee. This year, it was headed by Dr. Tom Hackett. And from those 10, the top three are selected. And when those top three are selected, the committee makes a visit to their classroom to see what they're actually doing in the classroom. And then the Teacher of the Year is selected from that. So it's a long process. It starts in January each year, or December, I guess, and then culminates with a gala. This year, we had almost 1,200 people attend the dinner and the gala when the Teacher of the Year was announced. So we are delighted that there's that much interest and enthusiasm for educators in our community. And Deisha, I am honored to be able to read this into the record. Whereas Deisha Irving has been teaching 6th and 7th grade math, 6th and 7th grade math, to Baker Middle School students since 2016, and serving the students of Muskogee County School District since 2009. And whereas Deisha is not only a math classroom teacher, respected by both the school community and her peers alike, she has been recognized as Baker Middle School's Teacher of the Year for 2018-19 and the 2019 Muskogee County School District Teacher of the Year by the Muskogee Educational Excellence Foundation. And whereas Deisha Irving has spent endless hours in and out of the classroom teaching students and empowering them to think freely. And whereas Deisha has helped her students develop skills such as questioning, provoking, and challenging them, all things presented to them. And whereas Deisha has engaged her students by producing innovative lessons that have life applications and has thus promoted learning to her students as a lifelong endeavor. And whereas, the purpose of the Teacher of the Year Award is to reward and recognize educators that have made an exceptional difference in the lives of their students, provided inspiration to their peers, and help promote an educated and vibrant community. And whereas, the mayor and city council of Columbus, Georgia acknowledges Deisha Irving as the 2019 Muskogee County Teacher of the Year and encourages all its citizens to congratulate her on this accomplishment and being one of Muskogee County's finest educators. Now therefore, B. H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, June the 4th, 2019, as Deisha Irving Day.
Thank you so much for that honor, and thank you also for what you provide to our community as well as our students. And I just also want to acknowledge Ms. Judy Thomas for everything that she's done for me as well as a board member, and so, thank you so much.
Thank you. By the way, I wish you could have heard this young lady's speech. I don't know if you've still got a copy somewhere. We may have a command performance at some point, but excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
Remarks.
I believe Deisha has her children here with her. You want to introduce those folks?
You guys want to wave? We're on our way to track practice, so they're...
Well, thank you, Deisha. Please come around, let us congratulate you. All right, thank you. All right, listen. Still, there we go. I think we've got a quorum now, don't we? We do. We do. We do. So we can, I guess, approve the minutes. Motion second, approve the minutes from the May 28th meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney for the final hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we will call the Second Taxpayer Bill of Rights Hearing as to be held between the hours of 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. At least one of the hearings, and we meet that at this time. Ms. Alexander, if you want to cover the purpose and the advertisement of this hearing, we'll chime in afterwards.
All right. Good evening. So as the city attorney mentioned, this is the second of three taxpayer bill of rights hearings that we are statutorily required to hold. The purpose of this meeting is to allow the public the opportunity to express their opinions on the proposed property tax increase that was advertised, which quite frankly is not an actual increase. The language in itself in the advertisement is required by state law. We cannot deviate from what is required by state law as far as the language of the advertisement is concerned. But basically, what that means is when the city is expected to receive more in total revenue from reassessments of existing property, we have to notify the public when we are establishing a millage rate that is more than the millage rate that is calculated had no reassessments occurred. So if there weren't any property, many buying or selling transactions where, you know, one homestead came off, another one picked up, and it was based on that current value, if we didn't have any of those transactions, then we would have no need for this particular proposal. But because those do exist, and because the millage rate that was calculated had no reassessments occurred is more than what we are proposing to adopt as part of the FY '20 budget, these hearings are required. And I'd just like to state that the millage rate that we are proposing for the FY '20 budget is the same as it was last year, the year before that, and the year before that. So there's no change in the property taxes. If you have a homestead, your property taxes will not increase.
Counselor, excuse me, City Manager, Mr. Uyghur.
Mr. Mayor, would you repeat what you just, the last thing you said? Is that if there's no... Be the same?
Oh, the millage rate is the same. That's correct.
You don't remember what you said?
Well, we do.
That's right. Well, and I asked the Finance Director to do that for a reason. I received a call today, and you're running the people as you move about, and they talk about the media advertising this property tax increase. And I've had to explain on behalf or for the media since, well, I've been doing it for 14 years, the city manager. It's the same thing this year, the explanation is the same thing we had last year and the year before that, and the year before that, and the year before that. It is exactly the same. And so if you have homestead exemption, for those listening, for the question that I received today, and you've made no changes, your property tax is the same, even though you hear in the media there's a property tax increase. And so it's the same explanation that I was giving five years ago and 10 years ago, and it's the same explanation today. It's not different.
That's correct.
And so I just want to make sure that for those who are listening, I know what you read, I know what you saw on TV. It's no different than it was last year. And so I wanted to just try to make that clear because of all of the confusion that has been created. We advertise based on what the law requires. That's what the legislation says we've got to do. We've had legislative agenda to ask to change the language so that it will not confuse people, and we've not been successful getting the legislation changed. And we will keep, we will continue to try. So for those listening, just know that the Finance Director just explained it. But please call us if you have questions.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience want to be heard?
We have a council, Councilor Davis.
Mr. City Manager, I appreciate you going in depth on clarification. It was really good to have that article in the paper today, that publication in the paper today that's published and showing, I think, five years, if I'm not mistaken, it showed five years. But when you read down that list, I mean, it really, it's self-explanatory. But at the key point of the sum of all the mills was in Urban Service District 1. I'm going to use that as an example, but Urban Service District 1 was 17.18. And if you see, that number was same all the way across. And that's exactly what you're saying. And that gave, I thought that gave a really good explanation. Hopefully, the citizens will see that. But I've got some of those, I've received some of those calls too, people a little confused. But it hasn't changed, even though the math and the calculation formulas and all, you know, the equation to get to that, if you look at the bottom and the sum of it all, it says it right there that the millage hasn't changed, hasn't changed the last five years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mayor, is that all around the table? We've got a couple of hands in the audience. People want to be heard.
Yes, sir. Come forward and state your name and your address.
My name is George Lottz, and my question is, you mentioned homestead exemption. What about the properties that are not homesteaded? It's still the same millage?
It's still the same millage. The only difference that could possibly occur is if your property had appreciated, and then just that, you'd see a difference just on what that millage would be applied to that.
Well, they just sent out the papers about what our values are, so none of that changed for me. I have rental property, is what I was asking. So the millage is exactly the same on not homesteaded. Doesn't matter.
That's right.
Would you answer the question, Anna Mike, please?
So the gentleman asked if the millage rate was the same for homestead and non-homestead property, and the answer is yes, it is the same millage rate that is applied to either non-homestead or homestead property.
All right. Anybody else want to come on up? Is there another hand?
And just one quick, one quick comment too, to remember that we have a legislatively set cap of nine mills on our operating fund. And so we can't raise the millage with regards to generating operating capital anyway. So there's not going to be any kind of millage rate increase on the operation side.
All right. That concludes the second hearing under the OCGA 48532.1. We'll have one more hearing at next week's council meeting at 9:00 a.m. If anybody else has questions, they can come then and be heard. But that'll conclude this one, Mayor.
Okay. All right, that public hearing has been held. We'll move on. You've got a few first readings?
We will. We're going down our business agenda. Lot of first readings tonight. The first item up, of course, is the annual operating and capital improvement budget. This is for FY 2020 in total amount of $284,781,626. This is a public hearing on the annual budget, and Finance Director is here to answer questions of council or anybody in the audience.
Counselor Davis.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to go back to that discussion we were having. And it's important to say, now, you're saying that we're saying the millage hasn't changed. Now, I want to clarify, that's for the city. That's for the city operations. Now, at the school district, the school district can still change their millage. And if they change their millage, your property taxes do go up. But that's up to them what they do. But the city has not changed as far as the, and that's 60%, no, 40% I think of the total amount that's collected. But they will approve their millage here soon, I believe, right? As soon as we...
Yeah, but I think, I think the point was that we advertised, it was, people thought we were saying there was a tax increase. I was just clarifying that we would not...
Well, we don't make those decisions. Well, we don't make those decisions, so I don't want anybody to miss it. Property taxes go up because if the school district decides to raise their millage, it's not on the city's side.
Yeah, we expect to get the school district millage toward the end of this month. We may not actually have their millage ordinance on until July, but they will certify it before the end of June over to us, and we'll put a millage ordinance on the table for the school district. It could change, but it may stay the same.
And just one other question for clarification here. I believe the state laws, the recent state laws, correct me if I'm wrong, but once the property goes through valuation, which we went through a countywide valuation, is there a timeframe before it's revalued, or is that an annual revaluation? I was thinking there's like three years before it's reevaluated again. So really, it would stay the same or less?
They value property every year, it's just that they have set a guideline...
They do, but there's a state law, Mayor, I think.
They've set a guideline from...
Help me with that.
They've set a guideline from...
If there's an appeal and a setting of evaluation, then I think it's fixed for two years.
Fixed for two years.
If there's an appeal...
If there's an appeal, but I think what he's referring to is they try to make sure that there's a complete digest review every three years. That's why they try to do a third every year. Now, they don't do it exactly a third, so they'll, with the new software and everything, the idea is to try to make sure they value, reevaluate that property just about every year. So you get a true reading, ad valorem means according to value, so they're just trying...
Right. But it's correct, if you appeal and one year appeal, then it stays set for two years.
If you win the appeal.
Right, okay.
I think that was two separate...
Okay, I got it now. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions around the table or in the audience on the budget?
Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Alexander, if someone watching wants to take a look at the actual budget, it's online, is it not?
That's correct.
And can you give that location so that if anybody does wanna delve into it any deeper, they know where to go to get it?
So if you go to the city's homepage, which is www.columbusga.gov, if you scroll down under the current news section of the homepage, there is a link there for the FY twenty budget, and that directs you to the finance department's webpage. You can also, from the homepage, view all departments, click on finance department, and find it that way as well. But it is a link that is available under the finance department's website.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so the, as the city attorney mentioned, our current operating budget is just over two hundred and eighty-four million. We have a projected fund balance of, for FY twenty, of sixty-five point seven nine days. And so I just wanted to provide that information again to council since it was the first reading of the budget where we, just where we stood as far as the fund balance. And Counselor Davis, the school district is required to advertise, just as we are as far as the notice of property tax increase in the five-year history. And I did look at their advertisement online, and the millage rate is the same that they're proposing as last year. All right.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on. Item two on our agenda, Mayor, is the non-operating budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty, as shown for the various funds. And these include things like the Urban Development Action Grant, the Home Program, Multi-Governmental Fund. Any questions on that?
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right. Item three, this is our annual offset to residential rate for solid waste collection for low-income households. This is done every year pursuant to the federal guidelines. Any questions on that one? All right. And we will call four, five, six, and seven altogether their contributions to our general government pension plan for FY twenty, general government, for public safety, for the major disability income plan, and for the death benefit escrow. All these numbers are reflected in the attached ordinances. Any questions on those?
Doesn't appear to be some, be any.
All right. Okay, we will have one item add on later on in the meeting, Mayor, but that's it for now as far as official business.
Okay. All right, any questions of the city attorney? If not, we'll go to the public agenda. Mr. Russell Scott, regarding the lack of safety crossings in school zone, Mr. Scott, if you would, just state your name and your address. And sir, you'll have five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Russell Scott. I'm a school teacher at Jordan High School, also the athletic director. I've been with Mesquite County School District for twenty-six years. It's come to my attention that at Jordan High School, we have, it sits on a block, okay? And in a school district, you would think that there would be crosswalks on each corner. And there's only a crosswalk on one corner. And that's kind of alarming to me. Just here recently, we've had updates to our fields, our athletic facilities, so that's gonna increase traffic. That's gonna increase, I mean, when you put the combination of young teenage drivers together with, you know, no crosswalks slash stop signs to slow kids and slow even the neighborhood people down, you're asking for a problem. And I've seen it firsthand. I've had a kid get hit before, and I had to render, you know, some first aid to him, and it's not a pleasant sight. And we kind of bypass these things when, if it doesn't affect us, you know, but it does, and it affects our kids. Another thing that I'd like to state also is that on Thirty-second Street, there is over a half a mile of just straight runway, no stop signs, you know? And when you get the, actually, on both sides of the street, there's another street on the other side of Howard Avenue, it runs even further, all the way down to the church. So in the combination of no stop signs nor crosswalks, and when you have people that live in the neighborhood, and when they live in the neighborhood, they get used to, I can go this fast for this amount of time because there's no stop signs. So, you know, they don't anticipate a kid running out in the street. They don't anticipate, you know, a ball going out in the street and a kid chasing behind it. And that's really been a concern. Like I say, I stated, I've been at Jordan for twenty-one years, been in Mesquite County for twenty-six years teaching, and my coworkers, they mess with me a little bit because I moved into the neighborhood. I literally live across the street from Jordan High School. And so, you know, I'm that old man on the porch. I sit on the porch, and I see all the cars flying by, and, you know, sometimes I howl, "Hey, slow down," you know? But we just need a little bit more that's done. And the reason why I would like to emphasize stop signs also is because I'm also the cross-country coach, and we go down to Lake Bottom each day, and that's where we have our practice. And when we go to run the steps at Columbus High School, a lot of people do not respect the crosswalk, you know? And again, you have a combination of people that just don't know the laws, where if a pedestrian goes by, you're supposed to do what? You're supposed to stop and let them go. But until I get, you know, my hand up and stop traffic and let my kids cross to go, you know, over to the steps, they don't respect it. But a stop sign, they will respect a little bit more. See, I have five minutes. Anybody clocking me yet?
We got some, we're good. You got two more minutes.
If I may, I would like to just pass out a couple of these real quick, just so, okay? And that'll give you, what she's passing out now will give you a visual of what I'm saying. I numbered the corners. I think over at corner number four is where there is a crosswalk. Now, mind you, Jordan High School is also adjacent to Johnson Elementary. There is a crosswalk going to Johnson. The only problem with that is, is you got kids that live in the neighborhood that have to pass through Jordan in order to get to that one crosswalk going, you know, to Johnson. So, and then on the second handout, it has the two red arrows. That shows the distance, and both of them are over a half a mile with no stop sign, no stop sign. You have stop signs going into Thirty-second, but nothing on Thirty-second to slow people down. And the only thing I ask is if we could get crosswalks and stop signs right on the corners of Jordan High School, you know? And again, we're gonna have an influx of kids with the merging of the two schools together, and, you know, again, with students just learning how to drive, and they still haven't mastered it yet, and with the neighborhood people that live there that also, you know, they fly up and down the street. It is a concern of mine. I have kids that are in school, I have a young man, and I got nine seconds that are in school, and, you know, I worry when he crosses the street. I really do, I really do.
Ms. Scott, we appreciate it. We actually saw that you were on the agenda this morning, and we've begun to look into this, and we're gonna look at some measures that can be taken to try to slow some folks down. We even talked about, you know, crosswalks, where you push the button, push the button and the light will blink to let traffic know that there's somebody coming across the street.
Right. Well, you know, and it was just, and sorry to interrupt you, but...
No, that's fine.
It was just a little, I don't know, baffling to me to where you have a school, in a school zone, and right next to the school, no crosswalks except for one, and that's on section four of the handout, and, you know...
Counselor Thomas?
Coach Scott, are those streets marked school zone? With the...
Thirty-second, if you follow Thirty-second going away from Jordan, I think there is one sign right after the caution light. There's a caution light a little bit further away, and it may, it may be one, and I should've checked, I should've checked. It may be one.
Well, as we're, as we're looking at the stop signs and the crosswalks, maybe if you would add that to your list, if we need to do something with the school zone signs, I know that those traffic regulations are only at a portion of the day, supposedly at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day, but sometimes that would help.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we don't want any of those red jackets to be...
Exactly. I feel the same way.
As a red jacket.
Of course. But, you know, and I've looked at things, and just in the crosswalks, the crosswalks really, and I can't say it enough, they have to be enforced with stop signs. Because I've just seen too many times in my twenty-six years of teaching and coaching that most people, they just don't respect just the crosswalk itself, you know?
And maybe one of the other things we might do as schools starts up again is to ask the Columbus Police Department just to patrol that area a little bit to slow them down.
That is also a thought, but the only thing about that is, is during the summertime, we have the mills, you know, for the kids where you still have traffic. We have summer school, you know, obviously during the summertime, you have softball, cross-country, you have football practice, to where our neighborhood kids, they're walking up there, you know? And that becomes, you know, like I say, over a half a mile of no stop signs leading into a school district, you know, you might be blown if you just sit there and watch, you know, the rate of speed that people go by, you know, in their cars.
And Mr. Scott, I, one of the most distasteful parts of my job, but your time is up.
I understand.
But stay near, sir, because if somebody has a direct question, we'll get you to answer it. Otherwise, if you have anything else you can wanna add, you can come at the end of the meeting for a little additional time. But right now, Counselor Woodson, I think, has a comment or a question.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. Truly appreciate it. But I'm going to ask, City Manager, if we could check all the schools? Because with the development of and remodeling of schools, with the changes in community to make sure that all the crosswords, all the crosswords for children are identified. He brought Jordan as our attention, but we might as well look at all of it to make sure, maybe we can talk to the school board, see if they can help us, and we can work something out where financially, we can establish something for all the schools, not just this one school.
Yes, ma'am.
But you bringing it to our attention makes us wanna look at everything, to be fair.
And again, Jordan being on a block, I did look at what you're saying. A lot of the other schools, they, they kind of sit apart to where they're not right smack dead in the middle of a neighborhood where they have to worry about the four corners. But I did, I did bring that up to them.
And I guess I'm thinking of it too, like, I would say, South Columbus Elementary.
Okay.
It's right on the corner...
Yeah.
Of a busy street, of two busy streets.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, that's why, that's what came to my mind when you said that. I understand what you're saying, but then I thought of Key Elementary. It's right in the neighborhood, you know? Do we have enough for them? And that's what I was saying. I'm just, you may, you turn on the clock, you know, to think, hmm, he's got a good point. And that was my only thing. But thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
Ms. Scott, thank you, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you, Ms. Woodson. And I, we've got your contact information, so as we turn this over, and I know the city manager's on top of it, he'll get it turned over. Frankly, it's hard to believe that there would be only one crossing on a school that has, its perimeter has four intersections. So we'll pursue that, and we will follow up with you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, counsel, for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will have our engineering director department take a look at not just his concern, but throughout the city as Counselor Woodson has suggested. Mr. Mayor, I've just got a couple of things on my agenda, but if I may, I want to read something from one of the department heads. And I had a conversation with you, Mr. Mayor, today about waking up this morning, as you did, to see a news story about the air conditioning at the jail. And as we talked, I did have the public works director to contact the sheriff, because the public works director did call me yesterday and explain to me what was going on with a generator. And then, before the meeting started, Counselor Thomas advised that they picked up a story from one of our local media organizations in the AJC about the air conditioning at the jail. And so, Mr. Mayor, I did send this to you earlier today, but if you will indulge me, I'll just read what came from that department head. And I told her, before you send this to me, I want you to call the sheriff and make sure the sheriff is saying the same thing that you're saying. So she wrote me, and she says, "On Monday, June third, twenty nineteen, public works had already scheduled work with Georgia Power to install the new, the new emergency generator at the jail." And I'm just gonna pull excerpts. Staff were advised of the work to be done and that they would be on emergency power for part of the day as Georgia Power worked. This was planned, scheduled work to install a new emergency generator at the jail that includes Recorder's Court. This meant that the jail and Recorder's Court were at half-power for parts of the day while the old generator was removed and the temporary generator set in place and wiring switched over from one unit to the other on the scheduled work to install the new emergency generator. The buildings were shifted to emergency power for about two hours in the morning and about one hour in the afternoon. During that time, and only during that time, power was changed over to the emergency generator and was at about fifty percent. This meant that their air handlers were blowing, but only recycling the air inside the jail. The rest of the day, the systems were functioning fully, and there was not a significant drop in temperature. Our jail crew responded to a complaint, the air conditioning was not working in areas E and F. When they arrived, they found no evidence that the air conditioning was off, and inmates reported no problems with the air. reported no problems with the air. The electrical work on the generator was completed Monday, yesterday, June 3rd, 2019, and we do not have any further outages planned or needed. The new generator will be set in place before the end of this month, but there is no need for any additional power outages. The old generators were removed, and the contractor will be working in the area and installing a concrete pad and some piping for fuel. Once this is complete, the new generator will be placed. That's what happened. And so you saw the hit line stories, and, you know, the jail is without air, and last night and this morning, these are the facts. And so I wanted to share those before I get into my agenda.
Well, thank you for clearing it up, because I think it's, it's, um, it's unfortunate that there are a lot of people that thought that, number one, we were unconcerned about the, uh, those incarcerated in the jail, which is patently false, and, and also that there was a prolonged, um, issue with, with the, uh, with the air. So, thank, thank you very much for clearing that.
And, Mr. Mayor, you know, there is no good time at the jail to replace a generator.
Especially in the summer.
Especially in the summer. Um, but, uh, I've got some purchases. Uh, the first on my agenda is a contract amendment for the NeoGov application management tracking system. Uh, we already have NeoGov, we have an annual, uh-
Move approval.
Second. Is it for item A only, or?
A, A, you see.
All right. There's a motion and a second to approve all the purchases. Does anybody want one of them pulled, or need more information? There's three.
We have one.
Uh, yeah, we, we will. If, if not, uh, we'll queue for the vote, and then we'll ask the City Manager to walk through the purchases. Counselors, please enter your votes. And they're approved. And if you would, walk through what they are, sir.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I've got trially repairs for two Metro Trialles, uh, that's B, and then the mental health services for Muskogee County Jail. Uh, it's a contract with New Horizons Community Services Board, doing businesses New Horizons. Uh, those are the purchases. And, uh, on the updates, um, Mr. Mayor, I've got a transportation update. Uh, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge is going to come with that update, and we will follow that update with a court management system update with the Deputy City Manager and, uh, our IT, uh, and it lists Forrest Toley, but I believe Shane Walker is going to be doing that update. So Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge with the transportation update.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Um, actually, Counselor Huff had requested an update on the Fort Benning Road Roundabout, so it's unfortunate that he's not here, but I went ahead and just, uh, gave a brief update on all the projects, um, that we have under construction now, and I'll just walk through those. Um, transportation funding comes from, um, several different sources, the other local option, sales tax, infrastructure, paving fund, uh, the T-SBLOS, uh, and T-SBLOS discretionary funds, GDOT grants, and L-MIG, which is, uh, local maintenance and improvement grants. And this is a formula-based, um, grant that we receive from the state. Uh, resurfacing, we've expended since FY15, um, two-point-six out of O-Lost, uh, two million out of the paving fund, two-point-three out of T-SBLOS discretionary, uh, three-point-eight in this fiscal year budget, for a total of ten-point-seven million. Uh, the FY20 budget includes two-point-five-eight million for resurfacing. Um, active construction projects, the first ones that are highlighted in yellow, those are wrapping up or have already been completed. We do have some, uh, punchless items and some signal work on the Wenton Road, Streetscapes, as well as on MLK, uh, so those items are finishing up. We have Fort Benning Road Streetscapes and the Roundabout, and River Road Bradley Park Drive. Uh, this is the Fort Benning Road Roundabout and Streetscapes. This is actually the new Brennan Road section, so we're realigning Brennan Road with Fort Benning Road. This, uh, is the new Brennan Road section. This is actually looking north on Fort Benning Road towards Casita. A lot of work going on in that location. Uh, this is actually looking south. You can see Spencer in the background on, uh, the left-hand side. Uh, this is right at the roundabout where Brennan and, uh, Fort Benning Road will, uh, form a new roundabout. This is looking south from Brennan Road, where you'll have a dedicated right turn, and then, uh, the, uh, lane to the left will be to access the roundabout itself. And this is, uh, further north, looking south again on the new section of Brennan Road. And this is, uh, the section of Fort Benning Road that's close to the Fort Benning Gate, uh, where it's been resurfaced. You can see we've added sidewalks on both sides of the road, and this will go, um, this is actually looking north on Fort Benning Road. Uh, another, uh, section of, uh, Fort Benning Road, which would be south of Victory Drive. Uh, this is a section that's looking, uh, is actually north of Victory Drive, and you can see Victory Drive at the intersection. And again, another section of Fort Benning Road, Streetscapes and sidewalks on both sides. There will be a, a connection off of Fort Benning Road onto Shelby to get you to, over to the Follow Me Trail, so there will be a connection to the trail, uh, that's adjacent to, uh, Fort Benning Road. Uh, the River Road Roundabout, this is, uh, the concept for the River Road Roundabout. This is a five, um, leg roundabout that's, um, under construction currently. This is, um, north, looking north on River Road, uh, where there's a lot of construction going on. We have a detour right now for about twelve weeks, um, from River Road to Bradley Park. You'll have a detour, uh, to get from those two locations. You can see how much they're building up, uh, Bradley Park to align with, uh, River Road and Green Island Drive. Um, again, a lot of work going on at that intersection. Uh, inconvenience for those who live in the area, but it will be great when it's completed. Um, and that, uh, completion date is currently scheduled for April 2020, so less than a year out. Uh, the, um, closure of Bradley Park and River Road, we're trying to do that during the summertime when school's out. Um, this is the culvert there at, uh, Bradley Park. And again, some just, uh, pictures to show how much the road is being built up in that And this is looking, uh, east on Bradley Park. Uh, this is, uh, looking south on River Road, so you can see they're, um, expanding the area there on River Road, um, to provide for the, the, uh, roundabout that will be Um, the, yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Thomas?
Um, Ms. Hodge, um, on, on those pictures, you can go from River Road into that, um, extended care facility and into that, um, medical office complex, but that's as far as you can go on Bradley Park Drive going east from River Road?
That, that, yes, ma'am, that is correct. You can still access those businesses off of River Road, but that is as far as you can go.
And if you're traveling west on Bradley Park, you cannot go any further than Brookstone Boulevard on Bradley Park?
That is correct. If you need to get to those businesses, you're gonna have to take the detour to come around.
Okay. Um, that has been one of the, um, questions and concerns that I've gotten, um, from people in that area. But you can get to those two businesses, but you cannot get to Brookstone School from River Road. You have to come west on Bradley Park to get to Brookstone School.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the Buena Vista Road Spiderweb Project, forty-eight million dollar T-SBLOS project, we are, um, underway with the right-of-way acquisition. We hope to have this project, um, bid out by the end of, uh, 2019. Uh, Buena Vista Road and I-185 interchange, this is a forty-million-dollar project. This'll be a diverging diamond concept. Uh, GDOT is handling this project with right-of-way acquisition. They are, um, aggressive with their right-of-way plan. They think they'll be out to bid on this project by the end of the year, um, and we'll see if they get all of the right-of-way completed. They have quite a bit of work to do on right-of-way acquisition. Uh, Casita Road, I-80, I-185 interchange, this is just one of the concepts that, uh, GDOT is pursuing. This is a fifty-eight-million-dollar project, um, and this is, uh, being worked by, uh, GDOT. Also, um, still the roundabout at Beaver Run and Macon Road is, um, a proposed roundabout by GDOT, as well as at the intersection of Lynch Road and Technology Parkway. And those two projects are moving forward with design. Um, other projects under development, we have, uh, three bridge projects, um, Benning Drive Bridge, Reese Road Bridge, um, as well as Claridon Bridge, um, the Calumet Drive Culvert. Uh, we expect the culvert to be delivered, uh, by the end of June with a project completion. We get a lot of questions on this project, uh, by December of 2019. So by the end of the year, we hope to have Calumet reopen. Also, under development is the Infantry Road Trail, and this is the east-west road that will connect, um, the Follow Me Trail to the River Walk, as well as provide a road connection between Fort Benning Road and South Lumpkin Road at the roundabout by the Waterworks. Tenth Street Plaza, uh, Mott's Green renovation, uh, Fortson Road, Williams Road intersection, and Liberty District Trail connection is still under development.
Counselor, uh, Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Pam, I missed the, what's the timeline on the Cowdron Bridge? I'm sorry, the Cowl, Calumet, Calumet Drive?
Calumet Drive. We expect the culvert to be delivered by June 27th, and then completion and the road reopened by the end of this year. So by December, that, um, section will be reopened.
Thank you.
Just a couple other things to mention. There was an article in the media about the JR Allen and the activity on JR Allen, um, that GDOT is doing. That includes cameras and signals at the entrances to JR Allen, as well as there will be message boards, um, to notify, um, drivers of any upcoming traffic issues, uh, moving forward. So that is a GDOT project, so you'll see some construction, um, out there. Also, another project, um, that's being handled by GDOT because it includes both Muskogee County and Harris County, it's the expansion of, um, US-27 Veterans Parkway that goes all the way into Harris County. There will be a public meeting, open house, and we'll send out flyers, um, as soon as GDOT, uh, provides those, but that is set for July 8th at Pierce Chapel Methodist Church from 4:30 to 7:00. This project goes from Turnberry to East Bon Acre. It will go from a two-lane to a three-lane, uh, road between those two, um, streets, and then a roundabout at 3:15 in Harris County. So it does include both counties, and so GDOT is handling that project and that public meeting on July 8th. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions? Counselor Davis, I ain't gonna get to you. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager and, uh, Deputy City Manager Hodge, if you would, I'd like to put a meeting together, uh, with the at-large council members to, to talk about a couple of, uh, road projects. And I'll just tell you quickly what's come to mind. I, I, I think one of these days, I mean, I feel confident that hopefully we get a, uh, you know, an, uh, infrastructure bill out of Washington, but I think a lot of that stuff's gonna be probably focused around shovel-ready, so I really wanna have that conversation of what we can do to get ahead on some of these projects and potentially projects in the future. Doesn't mean that you can design them or develop them, but just to get ahead to the point that they would be put in a self, or a shovel-ready type situation, that if there is, uh, money available, hopefully soon, that we can, uh, take advantage of that. So I'd like to have that conversation. There's a, a couple of roads that come to mind, uh, that, that I'd like to have that talk, if you would arrange that, uh, with the two at-large council members.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
We do.
And just one more item to mention, we had in the budget, um, in the current fiscal year, studies for JR Allen as well as Second Avenue to, um, evaluate those two corridors. That is under review currently. Um, the bids have been submitted, and that's under review, so that will be, uh, moving forward, um, when we bring that to council for approval, once the, uh, vendor is selected.
Okay. Couple more questions. Counselor Woodson?
Just, we're talking about projects and so, and you know where I'm going, Pam. Um, do we have any updates on the South Lumpkin Route? I've only been waiting five years on this.
Yes. So I don't believe you were here when I gave the budget presentation for FY20, but we do have, um, in the budget to do a study for both South Lumpkin Road as well as Brennan Road Streetscapes. Um, so those are both in the budget for FY20, so again, we'll be moving forward with selecting a consultant, once the budget's approved, in order to do those two studies.
So once, just to make sure, once we approve the budget, I think it's next week or so, then we would start in the process, or do we have to wait until, um, 2020?
No, we would wait until FY20 budget, so after July 1st, we will put together the specs for the RFP in order to select the consultant that would, um, do the evaluation and the study for South Lumpkin Road. And we'll probably couple it with Brennan Road and have them look at both of those corridors.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I wanna, well, I'll ask you later, because I wanna get involved, um, the business owners, the actual people that own the property, because the people that rent the property have to go by whatever the owner says. Um, I would like for us to, once this gets started, for us to meet with them, to ensure that we can get them to buy into it, so that they can do some, um, beautifications to their property. Um, I sent an email not too long about the Oakland Park Shopping Center, where people are vacating, but there's a truck still sitting out there with broken windows and, you know, and we need to do something. I know we can't take it out, 'cause it's private property, we can't touch it, but we can, you know, continue to cite it, um, because that's dangerous. The truck is there, broken windows, door open, and it's just sitting there, and there's trash on the side of it, um, just sitting there. So I wanna get them involved, so they can take some initiative when we make this beautification to South Lumpkin Road and Brennan Road.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to clarify, a question that I received regarding the cameras on, uh, the JR Allen Parkway, will they be equipped with any citation equipment for speeding or anything like that?
No, they are not being installed for monitoring of speeding, it's to monitor the traffic, and only to monitor the traffic.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Counsel Garrett?
Uh, I just wanted to hop in with the meetings that-
Counselor Davis is gonna have calls. We've actually got some streets that are bordering each other's districts.
Uh, 54th Street is one that's in dire condition that needs to be repaved, and then Belfast, for lots of commercial reasons, 'cause we wanna track businesses back over there, and they have a lot of heavy equipment going through there, but, I mean, there are quite a few needs in everybody's district, but those are two that I can think of that I'd like to be in on his meeting with.
Sure.
Thanks, sir. Pierce Beyond?
Um, so, Mr. Mayor, if there are no other questions on, uh, the transportation update, uh, we're gonna proceed with the court management system update, and, uh, the Deputy City Manager is here, uh, our IT Director Forrest Toley, and, uh, he has, and I wanna pause to say two of our shining stars with him. Shane Walker, uh, is new, replaced Jackie Holland, and he is sharp. And he may not want me to tell his age, but he's twenty-three years old, and he's advanced. I want you to know that.
Thank you, sir.
And then you got Jeremy Miles sitting behind him, and I don't know what we would do without Jeremy, a shining star in our IT department. These are two shining stars. I just want you guys to know that. And so, um, Forrest is smart, he's surrounded himself with some very bright shining stars. Uh, these, uh, and Shane, they reminded me, I keep talking about millennials, they say he's not even a millennia, you know? But I had to pause to just, uh, commercial to highlight these shining stars in our government.
I hope you got some money, they're both asking for raises now.
Uh, with that, Deputy City Manager wants you- With that, Deputy City Manager, why don't you take it?
Sure. We wanted to come back and just give council an update on the court management system. Just to provide you an overview, as you recall, we had all the courts is on a court management system that's on the mainframe. And one of the things that Forrest wanted to do when he first got here was to try to, one of the initiatives was to get us off the mainframe. That maintenance on the mainframe ends June of 2020, so we are trying to get that accomplished. Council authorized us to move forward with the replacement of our court management system with Tyler Technologies and a product that they have called Odyssey back in September of 2018. And they have hit the ground running. This is a web-based system that brings everything together. It's fully integrated from the time that you're arrested through the disposition of your case with the clerk's office through the court system. So it is a huge project. And I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Toley, our IT Director, to introduce Shane. But I have to say that he has come in, and these are our major, very complicated projects that he will be the project manager for. And he's been there for about a month and just done a fabulous job. And it's just been a seamless transition. So I definitely wanna applaud his abilities for taking over on this project.
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce Shane. He's actually been on the job for, I think, nine business days. The, yes, he's application development and support manager, which the big projects or the big software packages that he's in charge of is IAS World on the IT side, the finance payroll HR system on the pay side, and the court system project, which he will be project managing. And I just wanted to introduce him. He's our newest manager, and he will go through and probably do a better job than I ever would. So with that, Shane Walker.
Good evening. I don't think I could have asked for a better introduction. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Deputy City Manager. But I'm gonna try to be kinda quick and concise here. The project is really split up, split up into four sub-projects. There's Odyssey, which is the, yeah, which is the overall replacement of the outdated mainframe CAT system. There's Brazos, which is e-citations for CPD. So they have a device, and they write citations right there on the device. There's Eagle Recorder, which will handle all of the marriage license and gun permits. There's also Soft Code, which handles civil service for the Marshal and Sheriff's Department. The project implementation includes data conversion from the old systems, building of various forms and reports that might be necessary by state law, business process review, configure the system, test the system, train the users on the system, and then go live. Tyler Technologies has also given us post-go-live support. They will be onsite for many of the weeks after we go live. The project is kinda split up. Brazos has actually gone live June this year. It went well. Odyssey is expected to go live by June 2020. That's when support for the outdated mainframe system ends. We just recently had meetings on Eagle Recorder and Soft Code, so I can't give a deadline of when they plan to go live at the moment. But we do plan to give that sometime between now and June. With that said, I don't think there's much else. I'm gonna turn it back over to IT Director Dr. Toley to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Shane. Any questions? Counselor Allen has one.
Yeah, one. Just to remind us, could you kinda walk through each of the Brazos, Odyssey, and tell us which departments are affected by those? I know you touched on it a little bit, but if you could, pull the timeframes there. Timeframes are there.
Just to make sure that I have, Brazos will be e-citation. I'll start with that, e-ticketing. And basically, they have a scanner. They can do everything with the electronic means. It's electronic tickets. And when the system is completely in operation, there will be no keying. Right now, they have to do the tickets and still key like they did. But when the system is fully operational in June of next year, the e-tickets will actually be immediately available for payment or disposition. And that will be affecting anyone, eventually, everyone that writes tickets. Right now, it's in Motor Squad. That is the motorcycle police, but that's the place to test it. And that's where we're testing it. But eventually, that would be anyone who would write traffic citations would have this in their vehicle. The Eagle Recorder is probate court, and that's why it says marriage license and gun permits. It actually'll do other things that probate needs to do, but those are the things that kinda catch people's attention. And they kinda don't go together in my mind, but probate court does the marriage license and gun permits, but it also does the other tasks that the probate judge might need. We also have an Eagle product that's not mentioned that's used by the Superior Court, and that does the property deeds. And it's actually the same program. It just is a different module that does the property deeds. So that will be Eagle Recorder. Soft Code is basically the warrants and the summons and all the things that the sheriff and marshal does. So that would include evictions, and any of the paperwork they do today would be electronic to them. And actually, it would be whoever serves any types of papers. That's where that system would be. So instead of having to come in and get paperwork to deliver, there would be electronic means for them to retrieve that, document that, go through the process with that. And that's called the Civil Service, and that's Marshal and Sheriff's Office. The Odyssey system itself is the courts. So what that does is basically, anything that's in the judicial process is Odyssey. So that's from potential arrest, arraignments, adjudications, or jail time, or whatever the courts do, including actually the dockets. And each one is set up as its own court. So magistrate court has a court section in there, Superior Court. I don't wanna try to mention them all. I'll leave them out. But all the courts have the court system. So the Odyssey system actually is the court's system. But that takes them from arrest or conviction even to in the jail and release dates and all of those processes that has to do with courts.
Thank you. Okay, hold on. We've got, is that all? Counselor Allen? Counselor Thomas?
Dr. Toley, in working with the Recorder's Court, the committee that Counselor Barnes and Counselor Allen and I have been working with, one of their concerns for some time has been that their systems don't always talk to each other. And when someone gets, for example, a traffic ticket, they have to go, the Recorder's Court has to go into a different system and pull it up. You know, I don't wanna get too deep into that 'cause I'm not sure that I understand all of it. But I'm hoping that the answer to this question is gonna be yes, that when these systems are in place, both the Odyssey and the Brazos and all of them, that some of that duplication, if you will, or time-consuming activity will be taken care of with this technology. I know, too, they have said that one of their concerns is that once a case is adjudicated in the Recorder's Court in order to enter it into the system where other jurisdictions, if they, if, you know, you're arrested in another jurisdiction and they need to see your record, will be able to access some of this. Can you, do you understand what I'm trying to get at? Can you, can you help me out here?
Yeah, I think so. What we do today is you get a ticket, it's entered, and then it's paper, literally paper shipped to Recorder's Court. And sometimes it's entered days or weeks after the ticket. The new system is completely integrated, and you can even pay online with the new system once it's fully in place. You'll be able to pay your tickets, and it'll track. And Recorder's Court will actually do their financials in the new Odyssey system, too. So what we hope to accomplish is not only will it be a one place to log in, but it also will shorten the delay between receiving a ticket or moving from courtroom to adjudication or to moving to another county. All that should be shortened because it's all in one system. Today, they do have to key it two or three times from paper. That will be eliminated.
Good, good. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. It looks like that's all the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Toley. Mr. Mayor, I think he might wanna come at the end of the meeting. He's standing to ask a question.
Okay, so if you need, if you wanna ask a question, what we'll do after the, no, 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 that's fine. After the business is done, what we'll do is we'll allow you three minutes if you wanna come up here and make a comment. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, the final item on my updates, I've got tow-in. Some will know it as Traffic Incident Management Services. And our Finance Director, Angelica Alexander, is here to provide an update.
Yes, just kinda waiting. Well, hello again. So I am here to just provide a very brief update as far as our towing and Traffic Incident Management Services, RFP. The timeline that we originally presented has been somewhat reduced. During April and May, we finalized the evaluation committee. We finalized the specifications and put that RFP out for solicitation. The solicitation actually ended on May thirty-first at five PM. So now that we're in June, we will distribute the responses received. We'll conduct a pre-evaluation meeting and coordinate site visits with the proposals, with the proposals. By the end of July, we'll finalize the results and our contract negotiations, and we will bring forward a recommended vendor to council and hopefully have a contract executed as well as close out that RFP. This will all be done in the month of July. So we're looking to hopefully have something on the very first agenda in July for council to consider. So again, the sealed proposals for our RFP nineteen zero zero twenty-two were due no later than five PM Eastern Time on May thirty-first. There were two proposal options. Option one was to provide Traffic Incident Management Services for our public safety departments. This is the service provider that you would see at the scene of an accident to, you know, pick up a vehicle that was involved in an accident. Option two is towing services for our city-owned vehicles and equipment, and vendors were allowed to submit a proposal for one or both options. So just providing a little bit of detail for option one, it was our intention as a city to enter a five-year agreement with multiple qualified vendors to provide Traffic Incident Management Services. And this would have been done on a, would be done on a daily rotation basis as needed. So again, Traffic Incident Management Services is vehicular road services that provide for the safe and efficient removal of wrecked or disabled vehicles from an incident scene. These services include, but are not limited to vehicular towing and transporting services, winching or recovery, recovering services such as extracting or uprighting vehicles, road services such as tire changes, battery starting, and vehicular storage services. Some of the vendor requirements under option one, and this is not an all-inclusive list, the specs for this particular RFP was about fifty pages long, but this is some that I pulled out of the specifications as far as the vendor requirements, but they must possess a Columbus Georgia Business License, must have a secured storage lot located in Columbus that can hold up to four hundred vehicles at a time, must have a minimum of five years' experience. They must have a satisfactory and compliant safety rating with the Federal Carrier Safety Administration, and provide proof that they've had their annual inspections done in accordance with the FMCA, FMCSA. They must maintain a fifteen-minute average response time, which is measured from the moment a service request is received by the provider to their arrival at the incident scene. So they have to maintain that average response time. Then they must meet all of the other minimum equipment, personnel, and report requirements that are outlined in very detail, in a lot of detail in the RFP specifications. Option two, it was regarding the towing of city-owned vehicles and equipment. It was the city's intention to enter a five-year agreement with, again, multiple qualified vendors to provide towing services for the city. This is just for city-owned vehicles and city-owned equipment. This would be done either on a weekly and/or monthly basis for both Metro and Public Works as needed. The services provided are essentially the same as option one, which is towing and transporting, winching and recovery, and road services, to include tire changes and battery starting. The only exception to option two in regards to option one is the storage requirements. Because these are city-owned vehicles, they would either be towed to the Fleet Yard for Public Works or the Fleet Yard at Metro. So we would store our own vehicles. In the event of a multiple vendor rotation, the vendors must agree to match the best responsive price submitted. So just into, just getting into the details of our current towing, TMS issue on May twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen, the city received a letter, the email from Columbus Towing and Recovery Incorporated. They have been gracious to provide month-to-month services to us since the expiration of their original contract in November. But they notified us on May twenty-fourth that as of June twelve, they would no longer provide interim TMS towing services to the city. They would continue to process impound vehicles for which they have a lien against according to state law. However, all the vehicles currently on hold, and in the presentation it says fifty-two, I believe as of today, that number is updated to about sixty-one. That would need to be moved from their storage lot to another provider's location. So on May thirty-first, the city acknowledged receipt of Columbus Towing's notification and advised of the following as they requested by the deadline of May thirty-first, which was that we would honor their request to utilize another vendor for services and that we would be in touch with them soon to outline a plan for the removal of the vehicles currently on police hold. So our interim plan of action is, we conducted a staff meeting that was actually, we've actually had two staff meetings regarding towing at this point, but to conduct a staff meeting to discuss the timeline, interim vendor selection, and logistics of moving the vehicles currently on police hold. We are initiating our emergency purchase procedures for these services pursuant to our procurement ordinance. And our intention is to engage a vendor no later than tomorrow so that we can schedule a meeting with the potential vendors at least by Thursday, June sixth, to discuss the service expectations since we are running on a very short deadline that has been placed on us by Columbus Towing, with that date being June twelfth, as far as their willingness to provide services, interim services to us. And so as of June twelfth, we'll notify all of the user departments of the interim service providers, and that will be utilized until a contract is awarded by city council under the current RFP. So that in a nutshell is the update as far as towing and Traffic Incident Management Services. And if you have any questions, I'll take.
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, forgive me. I gotta, I gotta run real quick to a meeting out of spring like that they're having tonight. I don't wanna, I don't wanna miss that. But I just, just to comment real quick on this, and maybe it's already being done, but I know, I didn't realize the complexity of all this. This, you know, they call it traffic management for reason and other things, but it's a very complex... they call it traffic management for reason and other things, but it's a very complex contract, and certainly, there's a lot of variables involved, and, you know, I didn't really, it didn't really hit me until this weekend, understanding this. You know, we all see some correspondence. There were, there was a wreck right there at the roundabout that they showed earlier, and, you know, traffic was, you couldn't get, you couldn't go north and south on River Road, so, I mean, it was, it was chaos, but we had three officers there, and I was sitting there at the light watching, and it just happened. And before the fire truck got there, there were two, yeah, I guess the current contract, the traffic management agreement, contract that we have right now, within, before the fire truck got there, there were two records there, and man, they got them cars off the street and opened it all up and freed everybody up, and I'm like, wow, you know, that's, and then starting to understand that, what that means, how that, how that plays out when we're talking about 911 calls and patrol officers being available for other things and not being tied up in a situation for a long period of time. So anyway, just thinking about that and then other, over the course of the years, things, accidents that have happened, whether it's involving semi-trucks or big vehicles or things like that, I would think that it would be appropriate on the due diligence side to maybe the vendors that we're talking about, I don't know yet, but maybe some site visits to see if, if they can deliver, meet the expectations and the needs of the city, because like I said, I didn't really think, I didn't think, at first, it comes across as just towing, and it's not. It's a very complex contract agreement that if things are not met to exceed city expectations, there's repercussions. Stuff happens on the peripheral, and I hope we don't get caught in that situation. So going out and checking on that and doing some due diligence, a site visit, understanding that, and make sure everybody knows, I think would be key. That's my only comments.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I'll tell you, you know, we met at 2:00 today and with Major Ezell, who's here in the audience, and we talked about exactly what you've just talked about, and we'll have a long list of things, and we want to check the box on every single thing on the list. And so we'll go through the specs and do a long list and check the box. We share that, and we know what we need in Columbus, and whoever gets this will have to meet that need.
And the other, you know, the other thing, I didn't know, my colleagues didn't realize the part about just the judicial aspect of all this and the courts and the court cases and all, I didn't read, stuff that has to be stored and whether it's inside or outside or cold or non-cold or not touched or secured. I mean, all this stuff, the vehicles sitting there for years, they're still involved in court, ongoing court cases. I mean, that doesn't come to your mind.
Right, and I can tell you...
You gotta meet a standard.
Yeah, and, but I had a telephone call with the chief on Friday. I had telephone conversation with the chief today. Major Ezell was in our meeting at 2:00 today, representing police, and so we're making sure that, that we select a vendor that will be able to provide all of the services that we expect.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, thank you. I just wanna be clear, clear understanding. So the present vendor that we have now is no longer gonna do any services?
That's correct.
So if an accident happens now, we're just gonna call whichever vendors out there to assist, or are they still assisting based on a different pricing, or what happens now?
Well, the current vendor will provide service through June 12th.
Okay.
And so we have between now and June 12th to identify an interim vendor who will continue to provide and will continue to go through our procurement process to make a selection, a recommendation that we'll bring back to this body and ask for your approval.
And that will be in July?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. That appears to be all.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay, and I think we had one... Oh, the clerk, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm not used to not doing proclamations and going home. What can I say? I'm sorry. Madam Clerk?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, items one and two are resolutions excusing Counselor Barnes from the May 28th meeting and Counselor Crabbe from today's meeting.
Motion second approved. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
We have one add-on resolution to excuse Mayor Pro Tem from today's meeting.
Second.
Motion is second to approve Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion second, the minutes be received. Any corrections to any of them or any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? They're approved.
Have one board appointment this evening. Counselor Allen is nominating John Lawson for the Recreation Advisory Board. He may be confirmed.
Move confirmation.
There's a motion, second to confirm. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Just have one announcement for an upcoming board appointment, the Downtown Development Authority, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I apologize for jumping out of order there. All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, we have one more add-on item, resolution that's been passed around the table to recognize a lady who's served this community for a long time, and it's gonna be a surprise. We've been informed for the mayor to read this later at a ceremony, so if we can, keep this under wraps, but Counselor Thomas is gonna make a motion to get this passed.
I'm sorry.
If we're gonna keep it a secret, I can't say her name, so I move the adoption of the resolution as distributed to council.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
And maybe next Tuesday, we can read it.
We will. We'll make sure that the individual gets properly recognized. Thank you, council. So that is passed. Any further questions or any further business? Oh, this gentleman wanted to come, had, wanted to have three minutes. Sir, you approached the podium, and...
Albert Brinson, 3008 Apache Drive, Columbus, Georgia.
You've got three minutes, sir, go ahead.
I won't need that long. I was just inquiring as to how these e-citations are gonna work. Will they be tied to the body cams for the officers on the motorcycles? Will they be tied to the patrol cars? So all that information's there. How will the individual cited get their copy of the citation? Is it all gonna be a printout like a little debit card machine? I mean, I'm just curious.
They're good questions.
Because we have individuals who are gonna be charged with this, that, and the other thing, and although I would love the body cams and dash cams being tied to the system, I see there's this complexity there that, that we're, I don't think we're ready to broach that yet, okay? But I do know from current interaction with various agencies that there are a lot of things that happen. People, you know, get stressed about things, and I understand that it is what it is, but when you have a citation that you can't read, it's a problem. So I'm happy to see the digital age coming in. How it's implemented could be an issue. Again, I'm ready to move forward. I'd love to see it go forward. I'd love to have 100% transparency on it. If you get a citation for whatever on 13th Street, citation shows you're on a dirt road, there's obviously something wrong. It's an error. I get it. It's an error on the citation. But again, you know, there are certain things, certain aspects of things, like individuals, you know, they're in a traffic light, and two individuals are basically tailgating them, and now they're forced out into an intersection on Airport 3way, elderly couple, scared to death, and after being forced into this red light, the individuals that forced them into the red light are pulling them over and giving them a citation. I'm not talking about I heard, somebody told me, I'm talking about I witnessed. Just like you, sir. I still serve. I'm a retired disabled veteran. I'm not quitting. I'm not giving up on America. I'm not giving up on the people. But the system is here to work, and when you see things like that, now, there are some fine officers out there. They're doing a fine job. I don't know who these two individuals were. I wish I did, so I could hold them accountable. But there was no cause for the fear, the terrorism that was put in those elderly individuals when they're just trying to run along and enjoy their day. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Of course, there was a question in there, and it was about the...
The development citation.
Yes, sir.
To answer, this system's not integrated with the camera systems, although I'm certain that one day that that will probably happen, but as far as the tickets are concerned, tickets are actually printed from a portable printer. So when you scan the information in or put it in the system onsite, person's issued a ticket that is actually printed, and it should be legible, and like I said, we're testing all of that equipment now. So far, we haven't had any problems with the printers or the electronic devices. So to answer his first question, the tickets are printed onsite, and they are printed off of your regular electronic format. And then, once the system's 100% in place, you'll still get the paper ticket, but then you could immediately go and check your citation, and immediately is a relative term, I would say, much sooner than you do today, in a matter of days for certain, that you should be able to check on your ticket electronically online.
Great, thank you, sir. All right, any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Just to let y'all know, Sandra became a grandma.
All right, congrats.